I want to welcome everybody here tonight to the council meeting and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Could I have closed adoption of the, oh, conflict of, any conflict of interest amongst the council members tonight? Seeing none? Okay, adoption of the published agenda. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Van Andel and Counselor Bowman, all in favor? It's Kerry. And can I have the adoption of the minutes of the regular council meetings for April 15th? Have a mover please. Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Garant, all in favor? It's Kerry. You can move on.
Five point, thank you, Mr. Chair. Five point two on the agenda that the minutes of the special council meeting held April 15th be adopted is circulated.
Have a mover please. Counselor Bowman and Counselor Van Andel, all in favor? It's Kerry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Presentations, item six on the agenda this evening. We have here Randy Voges from representing the Essex Rocks and Rolls Cruise and Business Expo. He's here this evening to speak with council and administration and provide information concerning this upcoming event.
No, he can't get it on. There we go. So anyways, I'd like to, I certainly would like to thank administration for taking the time and giving me the opportunity working through council to come before you tonight. What I'm going to try to do is, what's my limitation? Is it five minutes we give delegations? I forget, I'm dusty on that too. So chances are I'll be asking for a supporter and a seconder to allow me to speak a little bit longer because what we're doing for the town of Essex in terms of the car show is what I'd like to believe second to no one. And to say it all in five minutes, I don't think I can, I'll have the opportunity to do that, but I'm not going to drag it out much longer than an opportunity to speak a couple more minutes to the file at hand. So with that all being said, as you may or may not be aware, when during my term on council, I felt as though the businesses in the town of Essex were struggling. They were struggling in terms of getting opportunities to have people come into the community and visit their establishments and therefore enhance their bottom dollar. So when we were doing the Spitfire Memorial, Presum Spitfire Memorial Plane, we were meeting as a committee and we thought that a business expo would be a good idea and a car show would be a good idea to bring some economic enhancement to the community. And so with that being said, we had the first Essex Rocks and Roll Car Show. The Essex Rocks and Roll Car Show, the first one in the history of that particular show was a complete sellout. We shut the streets down, cars were lined up to home hardware on both sides of the street and people in the community really enjoyed the event. So as a result of that, we did it in the second year and last year because of the election looming, we idled it and didn't do it. And this year it's back. But this year, I'm going to tell you, it's back with a vengeance. Because the reason I say that is because what we're doing this year, which we didn't do in the previous years, is we hosted, myself, Stephanie Winger and Suzanne Allison hosted the business expo, as some of you may remember. And then we also hosted the car show, which some of you may remember. So what we've decided to do this year is bring the two together and we're having the Essex Rocks and Roll slash Business Expo. So what does that look like? Is, it starts out with obviously some opportunities for some cotton candy for everybody, we're having a food truck there for everybody. And then where the local restaurants will be participating in the Rocks and Roll Business slash Business Expo by offering dinner specials. We're having the Coastline Band there, which is a renowned band in the Essex County area known for their 60, 70 and 80s music. We're having Enchanted Adventures, which is Sylvia Ward. And what Enchanted Adventures is, is Disney characters that come in full Disney character dress and they work and they enjoy the day with the children. We're having, again, we're having local businesses promote their businesses and we're asking and we're trying to get businesses to, in a small venue, set up on the street for that given day because, again, in previous shows, thousands of people attended. And so we're hoping that we'll have more than that this round. And then what we've also scheduled is a tug of war. And I'm meeting Wednesday night with myself and Suzanne Allison. And just so these people know, Suzanne Allison, Stephanie Winger couldn't be here tonight because they both had previous engagements. There's an event going on at the Legion tonight where they're working that end of it right now as I'm speaking to you to try to raise money for the car show and the business expo. So that's where they're at. But this year, we want to have a tug of war between the Essex Fire Department and the OPP. And we plan on doing a two out of three. And you can bet on the tug of war, who's going to win in a fun fashion. And so when you bet on the tug, for the tug of war, where does the money go? The money certainly doesn't go in our pockets. Actually, it's my intent, everybody who's working for the Essex Rocks and Roll Car Show Business Expo, whether you're on the committee or you're volunteer, prior to you leaving, I'm going to stand you on your head, shake you up and down, make sure you're not walking out with no money in your pockets. Because the intent of the show is to go to the Essex Community Services for a new vehicle for the physically disabled, mentally challenged and elderly people to get them to their doctor's appointments and their appointments. Because the reality is, is the current vehicle they're driving today, they got three of them. Two of them are parked because of the deplorable condition of them and the other one is striving to stay alive. And they're being subject to thousands and thousands of dollars in repair bills. And I want to encourage this council on your next budget deliberations, it's imperative that you make it a budgetary line item. Because that vehicle they drive around in has only one purpose and one purpose only. And that's to serve those, as I just mentioned, in our community. It has to be a budgetary line item. So with that being said, what we're going to do, because their bus is so dilapidated and they got no money to fund it, and I know Essex Council funds it, but they fund it in small portions respectfully, not enough to keep them going. So now, as a result of that, hence the reason why we're doing the car show. Because we're trying to get enough money stimulated to get that bus for them so our elderly, our physically disabled and our mentally challenged people in our community can make it to their appointments and get all the services they need. That's where every nickel is going. So with that being said, I want to tell you that we are having a tug of war. You can place the bets between the OPP and the Essex Fire Department and all those proceeds will go to that purpose right there. We're having a children's play area. So if you have any intent to bring in children, don't worry about that. We're going to have a special area with the Disney characters, we're going to have rides for them, there's going to be face painting, coloring books, everything for them. We're pet friendly. So if you want to have, bring your pets, we encourage you to do that. Ed Smith is coming with his rail cars. Ed Smith was the top dragster runner in the IHRA circuit. He won every race he went in. His vehicles are worth thousands and thousands of dollars. He comes in with a freight liner truck and in the freight liner truck, there's an elevator. And what he does is, he has two dragster rail dragsters in there. He pulls the first rail car out and then the elevator comes down out of a Peterbilt truck and takes the second rail car out. So he's coming, he's coming to the event. We have DJs. We have, again, live music being played by Coastline Band, but in between their sets, we have, we have live, we have DJs playing. We have Todd Porter coming. Todd Porter was the fiddle champion of Ontario in three rounds of competition that he attended. We have Paul Ream coming. Paul Ream is a magician. He's going to do a magical stage show and then he's going to work with the young kids in the crowd, obviously doing magical tricks and enjoying the company of the children there. And then one of the main events that was agreed upon today, and we've been working on it quite diligently, the committee along with James Knapp from Ken Knapp Ford, today we locked down, as you see on your screen, it's called the Trainwreck. And that truck right there is part of the Monster Jam series that performs at the Silverdome. And this particular individual who runs this Trainwreck and that circuit is coming to the show. And we just locked him down today. And that's promoted and pushed through Ken Knapp Ford. And I got to tell you, we've worked with several businesses leading up to this show and nobody has committed to this community more than James Knapp and Ken Knapp Ford. And I, and am I plugging them? You're dang right, I am. Because he works hard for this community, they spend a lot of money in this community and again, they're coming forward with that opportunity to, we're going to set an area up where people can enjoy the show they put on and get kids involved in that process and let them, let them be part of that particular role. And we're also doing the 50-50 draw. The money from the draw is going to, again, to community services. So the show itself is, certainly has no shortcomings of entertainment. In between monster trucks and fiddle players and Disney characters and you name it going on, it's there for the entertainment. So we encourage everybody, and I want to say this too. And traditionally, everybody in administration looks for an accolade. Doug Sweet right there has been so helpful to us in making this show happen. And I'm not big on accolades, I think they're a little bit, they're a little bit just passive and a little bit administrative enhancing and waiting for that favor to roll around when you need it. But that guy right there has worked his butt off for us. And he just met me just now on another event and said, Randy, let me know what you need. So Doug, I personally want to thank you on behalf of Susan and Stephanie. And that, this isn't pre-lived, what I'm saying. So thanks Doug for everything. So I'll leave it at that. I appreciate council taking the time to hear us out. But one last thing is, with all this being said, is it takes money to do it. A lot of money. Lot of money. And I'm paying for a lot of it myself, personally. And other people are paying for it themselves personally. But we need a little bit more. And I'll pay for it personally, the balance of it, but I'm going to tell you, I'm not crazy about doing it. When I have, when the show is the Essex Rocks and Roll Car Show, and I really don't want to hear will be precedent setting because I know that there was tons of money given to Explore the Shore. And I sat right in that chair and I was part of the people that gave the money. So all I'm asking for tonight is that each council through your contingency fund, that I assume is $2,500, that may be $3,000 now under a new budget consideration, that you each participate and submit $400. That'll give us approximately $3,000 to work with. And what are we going to do with that money? We're going to take it and we're going to advertise on AM 800. You know what we're going to say? The Essex Rocks and Roll Car Show in the town of Essex. So, and keep in mind that the money you're giving in me, and all due respect, if you choose to give it to me, is my money. And it's the taxpayers' money. It's not your money as a counselor. It's the taxpayers' money. So on behalf of all the taxpayers, I'm requesting that you give them some of their money back in the tune of $400 or $2,800 contributed to the show. What we spend, we will receipt to you. And what we don't spend, you'll get it all back. You will see very clearly that none of the money spent was for a little side party somewhere. Never happened, not on my watch. Not on my watch. So I'm asking that each council consider $400 from your contingency fund to help support the show. If you choose not to do that, then so be it. I'm asking that it be defined in a recorded vote if you choose not to do it. So I'll leave it at that. So I'm open for questions, any concerns or questions about the event, what's going on? I'd be more than happy to take them at this time. If you have no questions, I understand, I'll assume everything's good and I'm getting my money and I'll go home. Thank you, Randy, for the presentation. Is there any questions from council? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Randy Voges, for coming and sharing with us your event. It sounds like a great time for our downtown core. It's, I'm glad that it's not on Explore the Shore this year because that means I can go. Last year, it was, we were all double booked and I was in the Explore the Shore helping out there. So I'm excited to bring my children and come. And I think it's good that you're doing fundraising for Essex Community Services because I have been in contact with them a little bit and I'm understanding their struggles and I want to help alleviate that any way I can. Couple of things with my contingency fund, because there was an election year, we have a, I have a little bit of a backup for requests. So I have, I spent $1,000 on the hawk sculpture, which is not really public news yet, but I spent $1,000 on that. And then over the last week, I met with the baseball team, which nobody knows about yet, so I got to figure out what I can do for the baseball team in the Ball Diamond and Harrow. But I do have a check here that I can give you for my personal money because I believe in being an ambassador as well. So on your way out, when you come, I will give you personal money. I can't speak for the rest of council, but my contingency fund got ate up really fast and, but I will support your event financially myself and I will attend.
Through the chair, could I speak to that? Thank you. So Counselor Bondi, I certainly do appreciate that. I appreciate you surrendering some money and I want to make it very clear with council, like that of Sherry. If you have pre-positioned your funding for something that is not even before you tonight, but the assumption it will be, and for that reason you don't want to support this, I got no problem with that. I don't. And, but I'm just asking that council, if you have any opportunity to afford some monies being contributed to this cause, and it doesn't have to be 400, that's what I'm suggesting. But if you want to contribute anything, because again, if I could, if council doesn't support it tonight on some type of financial support, then as of early tomorrow, myself and Suzanne Allison are going to be knocking on the doors of businesses to get some money from them to help support it. And, and we don't want to bite the hand we're trying to feed, if you'll take that as verbiage. Because the truth is, is that we only are doing this, trust me, Randy Voges has got better things to do at this time than spend hours upon hours working on a car show. And we're only doing this to enhance and help businesses. So we don't want to have to approach them to fund something. So thank you, Sherry, I certainly appreciate that. Counselor Van Andel.
Procedural question, this is kind of unusual for somebody asking for a motion to compel me to donate out of my personal fund. Like if council votes for this and I vote against it, does it come out of my fund anyway?
No. No, no.
I was asking the chair, actually.
No, no, it doesn't, counselor.
Thank you.
It's up to you, whatever organization or what, where you want your money to go, as long, as long as it's approved.
Okay, I mean, I'm a car guy, I love cars, I've been to a million car shows, I still go to them. And the thing is that Essex already has four fantastic car shows every year at the Canadian Transportation Museum. They do a terrific job, it's all volunteers and they don't ask this council for money. And I think that's the way these things should be done. You know, other councils may want to contribute to this, but I think it would be kind of a slap in the face to the hundreds of volunteers at the Canadian Transportation Museum if we subsidize one car show and not theirs. So I'll pass, thanks.
Can I talk to that if I could, Chair? No, no, sorry, Randy, you already spoke. At the end, can I talk to that? Randy, you already spoke. Now it's council's turn. No, but I want to. No, pardon me. Well, I will talk to that somewhere, whether it's through the media, because that's not, that's not true. Counselor Bowman?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for your presentation, Randy. My question actually is, I guess, to Doug. And in the notes leading up to this, it was asking for approval assistance for town staff where needed during the event. I know we've done it, some of it before. Is that still in the works to be done? And to what level?
Through your worship. Yeah, for any events that we have in the parks, if we have notification, first I have to go to CERT, which we did receive from the organization. There's still some details that I've been working with Stephanie Winger to get back to us. But in terms of any event in the park that we're aware of, we provide garbage cans, picnic tables, recycling, just kind of the standards, and we'll do that also for this event. But they haven't requested anything extra of staff that I'm aware of.
Okay, and I'm fine with that because I think it's, whenever we have events in town, if we have to do a little extra on those areas as far as garbage pickups, pylons and that type of thing, I think is prudent on our part and I think for the event going on. Because they are great events for our community and as Randy's pointed out, it has done numerous times, it is a great event for the town. So it's on our side to help promote that.
Through your worship, just clarification? Just add, so to stress, this is what we do for any event in any one of our wards. Garbage cans, recycling, picnic tables, if they need barricades. So that's a standard that we do.
Thank you, Doug. Any other question? Counselor Garant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy, it's, it sounds like a really good event. I didn't attend it last year. You spoke about money you need to raise. Do you have an approximate budget for this event?
In terms of our total cost?
What's the overall budget you're looking at?
It's coming in probably around $4,300.
And roughly this vehicle that is there in need of, do you know how much that is?
Yeah, we've already met with James Knapp from Ken Knapp Ford and it's $92,000.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Just a point of interest in terms of that, is when, when, when they have a car show at Canadian Transportation, they charge $10 for every car that rolls in there. Our show is free. Anyways, let's move on.
Any other counselor? Through you, your worship. That on?
Still not on.
How's that? Through you, your worship. Just to thank you for bringing this event to town because I know it's well received. I have not been able to attend. This year will be my first because it's usually on the weekend I go fishing. I think I did mention in my email to you that I would help in any way I could financially. I have actually committed most of my contingency fund, but I think that there's still at least $250 that I can contribute to this event and I will be attending and I call upon me if you need any assistance.
Thank you, counselor. Any other questions? Yeah, could I have a motion to receive the report from Randy? Seconder? All in favor? Kerry. Thank you, Randy. What do you mean, thank you? And help me out, and I want to be rude and I certainly don't want to argue, but I come before council. Mr. Voges? Yeah? You already spoke on the issue. No, yeah, but. Hold on. Mr. Voges? Yeah? You already spoke on the issue. I asked council if they had any questions. Yes. You did get a couple people that said they would donate towards your. Right. Your event. Yes. And that's it. So if I could, I want to know what the balance, I want to know what the balance of council's intentions are. We received your report. No, but I want to know what the balance of council's intentions are. That's not fair. You're not entitled to that, sir. Not entitled to that. Sherry, thank you. Joe, thank you. And I don't know why council's not telling me what, so we, when I leave here, what I'm working with when I leave here. Come on, people. Like what's the big secret? Have a motion, receive the report, please. We did, solid. So that's it. You're not going to, you're not going to commit to me any funding so we know what we have to work with so we don't have to go to businesses in the morning. Received a report. Just made a deal with the devil. Shouldn't have done that. You should have committed to something tonight. Okay, couldn't we move on? Could you please leave council chambers, Mr. Voges? Enough is enough. Okay? Please leave now. Let's move on.
All right. Moving to reports, Mr. Chair. Eight point one, Finance and Business Services, 2019-01, re-year-end transfers to reserves for receipt and that the unused budget amounts for incomplete items as identified in Schedule A be transferred to reserves.
Have a mover, please. Counselor Bowman and Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? All in favor? Kerry.
Eight point two, Planning 2019-20, Release a Subdivision Agreement for Part Three on 12R 27717. And this is together with authorizing bylaw 1813 for receipt and that bylaw 1813 be ready first, second and third time, together with given direction for the town to execute all documents necessary to give effect.
Mover, please. Counselor Bowman and Counselor Verbeek, any questions on this one? All in favor? Thank you, it's Kerry.
Eight point three on the agenda, Planning 2019-21, McGregor Home Hardware Rezoning Application. And this is together with bylaw 1816, being a bylaw to amend the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw 1037 for receipt and that council approves the addition of supplementary zoning provisions to recognize and permit multiple dwelling units in the former McGregor Home Hardware Store at 9529 Walker Road and to permit a semi-detached dwelling along the Arquette portion of the site and together with three readings to bylaw 1816.
Thank you. Just before I ask for a motion, this is something that we really need in our community. So could I have a mover, please? Counselor Verbeek and Deputy Mayor Malash, all in favor?
Eight point four, Planning 2019-22, Re-Victor and Deborah Amber Rezoning Application at 6954 Sixth Concession. And this is with, together with bylaw 1815 to amend the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw 1037 for receipt for council's approval of the storage of fireworks for a temporary period not to exceed three years and that bylaw 1815 receive three readings accordingly.
Have a mover, please. Counselor Van Andel and Secretary, Deputy Mayor Malash. Any questions? All in favor?
Eight point five, Planning 2019-23, Re-South Point Lane Development Zoning Initiative. And this is together with bylaw 1814, once again, to amend the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw 1037 for receipt and that bylaw 1814 receive three readings accordingly.
A mover, please. Counselor Van Andel, a seconder. Counselor Garant, any questions on this one? Question?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One of the residents affected by this asked me, what happens to the homes, the original homes that are at ground level and aren't built up like the new ones? How does this affect them? Are they grandfathered?
Rita, can you answer that, please?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct. They are just as existing.
If I may, to Rita, any properties that built up, any runoff, they're responsible for their runoff though. And I think this is where a lot of residents are concerned. When you build up a property and your next door neighbor, we've got to make it very clear that the person that's building up their property, they have to maintain their water. So, okay. Rita?
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's correct, but that goes for anybody, any residential property in the town of Essex.
I think this was part of the concern.
Eight point six, Planning Report 2019-24, Part-Lot Control Exemption Request for Lands Within Registered Plan 1469, Wright Road in Ward Three. And this is together with bylaw 1817, being a bylaw to provide that part-lot control shall not apply to certain lands within that registered plan for receipt and that council approves the part-lot control exemption until May 6, 2020 and that bylaw 1817 accordingly receive three readings this evening.
Have a mover, please? Mover? Looking for a mover. Counselor Bondi and Counselor Bowman, any questions? All in favor? Kerry. Thank you.
Eight point seven, Community Services, 2019-6, Fire Station Three Building Condition Assessment Report. Set report for receipt and that administration be directed to set up a reserve account to start allocating funds annually for a new Fire Station Three facility, starting in the 2020 budget. And that administration be directed to explore potential locations for a new Fire Station Three to be built within the next five years.
Have a mover, please. Counselor Bondi and Counselor, our Deputy Mayor Malash, questions? Counselor Van Andel.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Isn't this kind of jumping the gun? I mean, we, shouldn't we be discussing this at our strategic plan meetings rather than approving it now? I mean, there's a lot of concern in the public about not just the cost of the last one, but that we're looking at two new fire stations and a new town hall, and that's a lot. And I don't know that I want to vote in favor of just approving that we start funding this now before we've had the larger discussion.
Thank you, Doug.
Through your worship to that, yes, this administration, we put a recommendation, but if it's council who wish, they can just receive this report and forward it to budget deliberations. We're good with that as well.
Move?
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Counselor Bondi, you had a question, too?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does Counselor Vanndel want to make that a friendly amendment to the motion? If we can make that a friendly amendment to the motion, I'm okay with that as well. I was just wondering if perhaps our Director of Community Service, Doug Sweet, or our Fire Chief, Rick Cornell, can just publicly state some of the challenges of the reasonings why, just so publicly the public are starting to hear about it. We did have the tour, I think, I don't know, was it last weekend where we saw, council saw on-site what the challenges were, and I think we can understand it, but Counselor Vanndel is right. We're just building a ward, you know, a Station Two fire hall, next is a Station Three, which I actually am more in favor of a new fire hall than I am a new town hall, but I'd like to hear what some of your challenges are, please.
Through you, your worship. We had Archon come in and they did an assessment of the building, engineers and everything, so what we've done is some of the challenges that we currently possess is drainage at the facility is a problem. We have some issues, a lot of issues with parking. We've got twenty-one firefighters and we really got no place to park when we have an emergency. There's washroom considerations that need to be looked at, so as we did the tour of all the facilities at the two weekends, you know, some of those issues were determined and it was shown in this report that, you know, the building needs to be upgraded, the electrical needs to be upgraded. We had someone come in and check all the electricals. So there's lots of issues, but, you know, looking at where we are, I mean, we understand.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions? So you're going to...
Further to Counselor Bondi's suggestion, is there a price tag on this so the public can start chewing this over, like just a ballpark we don't need to, so that they have some idea about what we're talking about?
Doug?
Through your worship, in the report for new, they estimate about two-point-eight million, but as council is aware, we're about to tender out probably in the next couple of months for Fire Station Two, and we hope to use that as a template and we should have a better accurate idea what it will actually cost at that time.
Thank you. Now, you're going to amend your motion?
Yes, I, no, how do I do this technically?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe the original mover was Counselor Bondi and the Deputy Mayor, so as long as they're okay with a friendly amendment.
Yeah. Go ahead. Okay, we're good? Okay, can we have a vote to receive it, please? Receive? All in favor? Carrie.
Eight point eight, Community Services, 2019-16, M&amp;M Canteen Operating Agreement Renewal for receipt and that a council approves renewing the M&amp;M operating agreement to operate at the Essex Center Sports Complex for an additional five years commencing September first, at a rate of four hundred dollars per month inclusive of HST, subject to the same general terms and conditions as outlined in their original agreement.
Have a mover, please? Counselor Vanndel and Counselor Bowman, any questions on this one? All in favor? Thank you.
Eight point nine, Community Services, 2019-19, Significant Event Status for the Eighth Annual McGregor Mug Run, said report for receipt and that council approves this event for significant event status for the purpose of applying for their special occasion permit for the event to be held Saturday, September twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, and that the proposed route and road closures, as requested in appendix A to that report, be so approved.
Have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Verbeek, all in favor? Thank you. This is a great event. I went last year. This is a lot of fun, a lot of good music, and it's a great event.
Eight point ten, Community Services, 2019-20, results of request for tender for the Colchester Beach Accessible Ramp for receipt and that council awards the request for proposal for the construction of the accessible ramp to Nevin Construction in the amount of two fifty-two ninety-five, including HST, and that council approves the additional funding of twenty-two thousand above the allocated two thousand and nineteen capital budget, with the funds coming from the Ward Three Recreation Development Charge Reserve Account.
Have a mover, please? Counselor Bondi and Counselor Verbeek, any questions? Counselor Vanndel.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if we could postpone this for a little bit so we could have an artist's rendering of what this thing is going to look like. This park is arguably the best park in town. It's a thing that the town is most proud of, and I'm afraid that this thing is going to be a monstrosity that is hated by the public. When we had our facilities tour last week, we were shown it's going to go from here to there, and that expanse basically would obliterate the bluff that probably tens of thousands of people sit on and use every summer when they use that park. And I just think that's probably the wrong thing to do. I think just because it's subsidized by another level of government doesn't mean we do it. We have to look at the effect on the people who use this park. And while I agree that we probably need to improve disability access, I think there's better ways to do this. I mean, a quarter of a million bucks can buy a lot of elevator. We've already got a ramp that goes halfway down at the community center there. One small hydraulic lift could probably be bought for the same amount and wouldn't destroy, like, the part of the park that most people use when they go to that park. I go to this park myself. Last year, we sat on it, on that bluff, as we watched the fireworks during your Fun Fest. And I just think that we'd be giving up a lot for very little in return, and I think people will hate this if it suddenly just appears, "Oh, my God, who decided that?" I think we need a rendition of, an artist's rendering of this first so that we can see it and chew it over, because otherwise, I think, we'll be creating a lot of grief for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Through your worship, the previous council, so I apologize if it hasn't been forwarded to this council, there is an artist's rendering of it, so I will forward that out in the next fifteen, twenty minutes, once we get through these reports so you can see that. As Counselor Vanndel mentioned, we have received a hundred-thousand-dollar grant for this project, and it has been brought up in the past by the Accessibility Committee. They need some access down to that lower level, so I will forward out that rendering and we'll leave it to council how they wish to proceed.
Thank you, Doug. Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're kind of outnumbered right now, Counselor Vanndel, because your sidekick isn't here. So I understand you're the council, you're the, your Ward Three voice, so I think that that gives a little heed. I do think we're planning our wards' meet and greets, the ward open houses, so I think it would be a good idea, like, if we pause it a month, it may not be the end of the world. If we have a visual at that meet and greet, then we can talk to it and then we can see, like, I, you know, I think it's great. I actually, I do think it's great, because I was in Colchester talking to residents, and it seems like it's the last piece of the puzzle to get people down to the lake. So I support it, but I hear the hesitation here, and I don't want to push forward if there's a little bit of hesitation. For example, Erie Street, right? When we redid Erie Street, I got kicked back from that because we didn't explain to the residents what was going on. So I think, I, I'm okay with postponing it, showing the residents, talking to them, and seeing what's going to be done. I do believe that at the end of the day, I really want to see this happen. I do know, understand it was initiative that started in the last term. The Accessibility Committee does support it. We do know as a council, we've had, we've had studies, they're older, done on the harbor, and you can't wheel a wheelchair down the harbor. You can't, it's, like, you can't put a stroller down there. It's just, you're like, you're walking like this and you're almost going to topple over. So it's not safe as is. The elevator idea may be an idea, but, you know, it's really hard to get parts in this community of four elevators, so I don't know if I want to go there. I hear what you're saying, though, and I'm wondering if our Director of Community Service can provide us with a flyer and we can bring it, if the CEO has any thoughts, to our ward open house.
Go ahead, Doug.
Through your worship, just so council is aware, for the grant for the hundred-thousand dollars, as long as it's built by March, March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, so we have that deadline, the tender went out when it did because the goal was, if we're proceeding, it could be constructed by early July, kind of before the peak season. So if there is a delay, we would just have to look at doing it in the fall season.
Counselor Bowman?
He partly answered that. If we delayed it to our next council meeting, which is two weeks, would that still keep things on schedule?
Through your worship, I would have to follow up with our consultant. That'd probably make it tight, but we could see. It's already been, like you said, we tendered it out, so a contractor could be ready to But that's, that's council if they wish. We're just going timing by July, just because of peak season. If not, it would go after, in September, probably, we look at doing the work.
If, I might as well, I presume that if we caboshed it, there'd be some penalties to pay for the tendering process? No?
Doug, if you want to...
Through your worship, each tender is a little different. It could be either sixty to ninety days, so I'd have to look into what the timeline was on that, after it's being awarded, but we could let council know.
The only problem is, we wouldn't meet until next, for two weeks, so if we did delay it, I guess it's whatever everybody's choice is.
Counselor Garen?
Through the chair. Doug, did the consultant come up with any other alternative renderings other than the one that's being presented?
Through your worship, no, because that was part of the grant process, to have that thing. It has shifted a bit if, as we did the tour, as Counselor Vanndel mentioned, there was a large tree there, so it has shifted more towards the east to avoid that, but it's the same concept.
Any other questions? Counselor Vanndel.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Is this structure mainly concrete, mainly wood, and how many feet wide is it? Thank you.
It's very similar to the one on this by the community center, so it is a concrete ramp with rebar and metal railings. In terms of the exact length, I do not know that.
If I can just say myself, I think, any other counselor want to speak? If I can say, I hate to delay it, because this is something, this is something, counsel, that's been in the making for a while now, and it is something we need. I agree with Counselor Bondi. I know, I walk up and down that entrance going down to the harbor, and I tell you, it's a struggle, and it is, for anybody that's handicapped or, it's, that's a real problem. That's a real problem. So I, personally speaking as a mayor, I don't want to see this delayed. I really don't. I, I understand what you're saying, Counselor Vanndel, I really do, but I think it can tie into, to the bluff, what we have there. I really do. I don't think it will be gaudy-looking. I think it'll fit in, it'll fit in, and, you know, I like to see the project go ahead. I don't want to see it delayed. I really don't. So, that's my opinion.
Through your worship, at the end of the day, you know, this is for council, council to provide us direction on, I think there's an opportunity here to table it at this meeting. We have our strategic session Monday, so there is a potential that we could put it on that agenda before our strategic planning session on Monday, when all of council will meet. It'll give us the week an opportunity for those renderings to be sent out, for us to confirm the award of the contract length on this tender, because we're not, they're all vary, and then discuss with the contractor how that'll affect the delay, right? If it's more than a week, if that pushes his schedule into the fall and whatnot, so that we can get a little more information from you, and I think still, within a week, decide which direction we want to go. As far as the open house ward meetings, those are council's ward meetings, so if that's information that you would like us to have at those meetings, that's entirely up to you guys. You guys are the ones that tell us what you want there and tell us materials that you need, and we're support for you at those meetings. So some food for thought, anyways.
Thank you, Chris. Now, we had a motion, now, I guess, what do we have to do? Withdraw the motion and just table this now? Somebody have a motion?
No, through you, Mr. Chair, you can have a pending question that gets tabled until it's, until it's brought, until it's taken from the table.
Okay. So can we have, we need a motion to table it, then? Do we?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if that's council wish, you would need a mover, seconder, a vote to table it.
Counselor Vanndel will make the motion, seconder, to table it. Counselor Bondi. Counsel Bowman. The date? Yeah, next Monday. All in favor? Thank you.
Eight point eleven, Community Services, 2019-21, June is Recreation and Parks Month. That said report be received and that council proclaims June as Recreation and Parks Month in the Town of Essex by adopting the form of resolution proposed.
Have a mover, please? Counselor Verbeek, seconder, Deputy Mayor Malash, all in favor? Carrie.
Eight point twelve is Community Services, 2019-22, re-Youth Friendly Community Recognition Program, and I believe we have a short report from our Manager of Recreation Services, Cynthia Cakebread, together with a presentation of the plaque received, which, relating to
Doug, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, just on the report, I know Cynthia never mentioned it, but this is one of those
Essex, Town of Essex Successful Designation as a Bronze Youth Friendly Community.
awards that took over twelve, fourteen months? The number of criteria, there's ten criteria to meet. I know we received a bronze, but her staff to get to even bronze is incredible. We're one of the few in this area, if anybody?
Uh, city.
City of Windsor, no other municipalities around here over this, so it's kudos to her staff, but again, it's something that took over fourteen months to get this accreditation, so it's something to be very proud of.
Counselor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if Doug passed it along, but just to the overall Community Services Department, I did get an email saying that people in Harrow are noticing the increase in programs out of the Harrow and Colchester area, so I appreciate all of that, too. It's good to hear.
Great job, great job.
Eight thirteen on the agenda is Community Services... Oh, jeez.
Oh, yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair, my apologies. We need a motion to receive that report.
Need a motion to receive it. Counselor Verbeek, Counselor Garen, all in favor? Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eight thirteen, Community Services, 2019-023, re-Lifesaving Society Affiliate Recognition Award. That said report advising council of the Community Services, Recreation, and Culture Division standings in the Lifesaving Society Affiliate Recognition Award, the Ontario Branch categories. That said report be received.
Counselor Bondi and Counselor Vanndel, any questions? All in favor? Carrie.
Eight fourteen, we have a verbal report from our Chief Administrative Officer, providing council with an update on the status of various development matters or projects in the Town of Essex.
Good. Chris? Thank you.
Thank you. Through your worship, I just wanted to go through, council had requested maybe quarterly to go through developments and things that are happening within the town, so some of these you may know of, which is fantastic, some you may not. So the list is good and lengthy, which is a good thing. So I'll start in Colchester. The Colchester Ridge Estate Winery is planned to open this summer, which is fantastic news. Pagliore Wineries has undergone extensive expansions, you know, including full menus and whatnot, so a full-service winery that way. The cottage rentals in Colchester are in the building permit stage. That's what you guys had rezoned a little over a year, around, within the last year. The restaurant, The Rec, is destined to open very shortly. In Harrow, Parkland Estates is in for rezoning, May twenty-third. There's a meeting in Harrow.
That said report advising council of the Community Services, Recreation and Culture Division standings in the Life Saving Society Affiliate Recognition Award, the Ontario branch categories. That said report be received.
Counselor Bondi and Counselor Vanadold. Any questions? All in favor?
Eight fourteen, we have a verbal report from our chief administrative officer providing council with an update on the status of various development matters or projects in the town.
Chris? Thank you.
Thank you. Through your worship, I just wanted to go through, council had requested maybe quarterly to go through developments and things that are happening within the town. So some of these you may know of, which is fantastic, some you may not. So the list is good and lengthy, which is a good thing. So I'll start in Colchester. The Colchester Ridge Estate Winery is planned to open this summer, which is fantastic news. Pagliore Wineries has undergone extensive expansions, you know, including full menus whatnot. So a full service winery that way. The cottage rentals in Colchester are in the building permit stage. That's what you guys had rezoned a little over a year, around, within the last year. The restaurant, The Rec, is destined to open very shortly. In Harrow, Parkland Estates is in for rezoning May twenty-third. There's a meeting in Harrow for that rezoning. It's already within the settlement areas, so the rezoning shouldn't be an issue, but it goes May twenty-third. The vacant lots in the land south of the Hometown Pharmacy on Queen Street are looking for a minor variance to consider a reduction in parking to be able to construct a commercial residential building. So that's positive news for Queen Street. The Delabona subdivision, which is just north of Coleo Wineries, is in the final stages of review with Urca still. I know that's been some time, but nothing's come back to the town on that. Atlas Tube is looking towards an expansion northerly, quite a large expansion. So we're dealing with them in terms of temporary parking and moving stuff around, drains and whatnot. The Harrow Junior School just gained part lot exemption from the county. We've had a few meetings with the owners in terms of details. We haven't received anything to go over site plan control, but still a step in the right direction nonetheless. Two new businesses in Harrow. We've got some ribbon cuttings for those shortly, the Bearded Dog and Cannadel, the custom dining furniture. In McGregor, on tonight's agenda, you pass the rezoning for the home hardware, which is fantastic. We've had some discussion, very preliminary discussion with various owners of residential zone lands, the lands behind the community center and the extension of Missachio Drive. Very present, like I said, very preliminary, but some discussion. In Essex Center, you have Essex Townsview, which is in its final stage. That final stage includes expansion of the pond and completion of the park, which is, I'm sure all the young kids in the area are looking forward to. Essex Chicanah subdivision, which is off of Hanlon, we're working with the developers. I was working with them today to finalize the value to get their securities. Once they get their securities or we get their securities, they can apply for their permits and they can start construction of that phase. Essex Crossing, which is behind McDonald's and Tim Hortons, is in its design stages still with the developer and the consultant. Stormwater management is one of the larger hurdles, as with most developments these days. Gianni Estates, behind the arena, the lands behind the arena, the Hanlon EA is wrapping up. It's kind of on hold from that Hanlon EA. That EA is wrapping up, and that's going to be coming to council very shortly. Woodview Development, which is in between Gianni Estates and Woodview Street, is, I guess, we're in the active design review stage. So it's a development that's been around for some time, and we're going back and forth with the consultants and the engineers and the developers, trying to finalize those details on stormwater management and sensitive areas. The A and W, everybody can see that site's getting prepped, fences up. The Kuboto dealership is in full-blown construction. I'm currently in conversations with utilities, so both Union Gas and other utilities, looking at ways to be able to service that road, you know, completely. So not only will that assist the Kuboto dealership, it may entice other developers. I'm just trying to work around the legalities and the liabilities of servicing utilities and at whose expense and who carries that cost. But positive moving forward, we've also had several new openings in Essex Center, Kebab Cheese, Rockabye Baby, The Anne's, The Grand, On The Docks, a great amount of ribbon cuttings here. Schinkels is looking to open this summer. So and in addition to all of that, there are still quite a few other irons in the fire. I just can't talk about them right now. And hopefully, as details come out, you guys will know and you'll be the first to know.
Thank you, Chris. And if I can just add to that, the Deputy Mayor Malash and myself, we've been working with a lot of investors that want to invest money in this area. And with the help of Nelson, we've been in contact with quite a few. There is some, there is some that's going to come to the table. But we really appreciate your work, too, Nelson. And one more.
The Weston Bakery site, they've applied for their building permits, which is a good step in a way of getting shovel on the ground.
Thank you. We have a motion to receive the report. Oh, you have a question?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. That was a fantastic report. I bet that's more, more good news development-wise and growth-wise than the town's had in many years. And right into the middle of it, Mr. Nepse, you slipped this little bombshell that if I was still in the news business, I would say is a page-one story about Atlas Tube expanding. Could you tell us a little bit more about that? I mean, industrial expansion is kind of, or as rare as unicorns these days. Is it warehousing? Is it manufacturing? Square footage? Jobs involved?
Through your worship, the details of the expansion are in the preliminary stage. We're in the early onset, noting that they want to expand their facility to the north into their storage lands right now. As a requirement of that, there's quite a bit of operational things that have to fall in place, the relocation of the drain. So there's going to be municipal drainage meetings that fall out of that. So like I said, preliminary stages. I don't have all the details in terms of, you know, sizes, numbers, whatnot. We need to get the utilities in place first and the logistics of how they're going to wrap their heads around temporary parking, and then we'll come forward with the final details.
Thank you. Anybody else? All in favor? Received the report. Oh, we didn't get a mover? Can I have a mover? Counselor Bowman and Counselor Vanadold. All in favor? It's Gary. Thank you.
Eight fifteen on the agenda is Communications Report 2019-02, Re-Implementation of Online Service Request System. That said report be received and that council approves the recommendation contained therein and that the $6,000 total implementation costs be taken from the one-time payment of $62201 that was received from the province to support small and rural municipalities' efforts to become more efficient and reduce expenditure growth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just a quick comment. I think this is fantastic. I've been waiting for this for nine years. So it'll be, it'll be great. I'm on social media a lot, and I get probably four work orders a day, some days. So this is great. I can just easily direct them. If they can go on Facebook, if they can go on Facebook, then they can put in the work orders and I can focus on some higher level things. But I love it. I can't wait to unroll it and really promote it and get it out there and get our residents using it.
Thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor Malash.
I agree with Counselor Bondi. It's something we've been waiting for, for a while and been asking for. And thank you, administration, for getting us to this point where we can actually put something in place and move forward on it. This is going to be revolutionary for us, I think, that, you know, residents will have some feedback from, on what's ongoing with whatever requests they've put in to the town. Thank you.
Can I have a, receive it? All in favor? It's Gary.
Eight sixteen, Economic Development Officers' Report 2019-03, Re Essex Tourism Events Fund Applications for May 2019, for receipt and that council approves the distribution of $3,000 total in funding for the two tourism event fund applicants noted therein.
Item nine, any reports from our youth council members this evening?
Ava? Yeah. Okay. Hi, everyone. So tonight, I'd just like to briefly go over the Squirets Easter egg hunt that we had on April nineteenth. We had about one hundred and twenty guests, and we had four different age group Easter egg hunts. We had a lot of games set up and a craft table, and we prepared a full breakfast for everybody. And we donated a bunch of money and socks and underwear that people paid to get in. And the feedback from parents was really positive. And although we couldn't use the parquet this year because of the weather, we hope that we can continue this tradition and we can use the parquet in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions?
Through you, your worship. Not really a question. I just want to say to Ava and the Squirets, it was a wonderful job. I thought I was bringing my two granddaughters for a quick hour. We stayed the whole time, and they had a wonderful time.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. I have some report. On May thirty-first, 2019, at Essex District High School, the student body will be participating in the Relay for Life. We will be walking for approximately eleven hours to fundraise and provide awareness for Canadians affected by various types of cancer. Our goal is to raise $1,500 as a school.
Congratulations to you. That's great. Any questions? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just if any counselor has a five, ten, or twenty in their pocket, they could hand it to Cameron. I got twenty for you there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Vanadold?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Could you explain a little bit more how do, how do people donate to this? What can people do to get you their money?
We have like a pledge sheet. So I think, I have one in my folder right here that you can donate your money to. So it's just right on here.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to receive the report, please? Counselor Bowman, Counselor Garan, all in favor? It's Gary. Thank you.
Item ten on the agenda, any updates from county council?
I don't have any.
None from, none from me either. Thank you.
Eleven point one on the agenda, correspondence to be received, that the correspondence so listed in Agenda item eleven point one be received and where indicated to further share with the community using suitable methods of communication.
Motion, please. Counselor Verbeek and Deputy Mayor Malash, any questions on this one? All in favor? It's Gary.
Eleven point two point one on the agenda, correspondence for receipt and/or receiving support. Eleven point two point one, the annual shareholder resolutions for EOK Energy, Inc., that council acknowledges receipt of the financial statements for EOK for the year ending December thirty-first, 2018, and supports the signing of the annual resolutions, the annual resolutions, appointing the directors and KPMG as auditor, and that the mayor be thereby authorized to so sign. Eleven point two point two, correspondence from the Townimento, read the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund Resolution, that the correspondence dated April sixteenth from the Townimento, asking council to consider the resolution that is petitioning the provincial government to complete the review of the OMPF in expeditious manner, be received or received and supported, and if so supported, that the appropriate letter of support be sent.
Have a motion, receive it? Receive and support with the letter? Counselor Vanadold. Counselor Verbeek, all in favor? It's Gary. Thanks.
Item twelve, committee meeting minutes, that the minutes listed in Agenda item twelve, together with any recommendations noted therein, be received, approved, and adopted as circulated. Item sixteen is reports and announcements from council members this evening.
Deputy Mayor Malash.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Counselor Garan.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to bring everyone up to speed on the Orchard Park Apartments. Their elevator was, has been broken down since March tenth. There's been lots of stuff going around on social media. I know it's not a municipal issue per se, but I did go down there and I did speak with the management team, Apex. I spoke with several residents. I spoke with Tis and Group, who's the elevator maintenance company. They did start working last Monday. It is a huge job. The part itself had to be manufactured from scratch. I believe that is going to be in this week, if it's not in already. Still going to be several weeks of work there, but they do have, all the residents are aware of the situation. They do have volunteers in place to assist the residents there. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of what was going on down there and that it's a terrible situation, but it's being resolved as soon as possible.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Verbeek, anything?
Through your worship, no, nothing to report this week.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since council has had some preliminary discussions about a new town hall, I've been hearing lots of feedback from members of our public. So I did talk with the CEO, and the notice of motion that I was going to bring forward to discuss the next meeting will be, will be discussed. We'll discuss it at our council strategic planning session. When we had the meeting about talking about a new town hall, I never even really thought about possibilities of Harrow Satellite Office. And so since I've been talking to people in Harrow, they're like, well, first of all, do we really need a new town hall? That's, that's the question I'm hearing. And I'm, you know, I understand that our town hall is not great. I understand, I get it. I've been sitting here for eight years. But I'm also hearing other comments and a lot of comments from counselors, like, we haven't earned it yet. We don't have growth, right? The chamber has a lot of concerns in Harrow about that. So to let residents have feedback, there are surveys going around. I initiated an award survey a couple of weekends ago, and I've got almost all the word done. And the town has put out a survey as well. So I believe the town survey you have until May fourteenth. It's online, it's on Facebook. There's also paper copies at the Harrow Arena and paper copies at Town Hall. So I'm urging residents to fill it out to give their feedback back to, back to our council. I'm saying, you know, do you want us to invest in recreation? Do you want us to invest in rooms? And by rooms, I was alluding to Town Hall. Or do you want us to invest in roads? Or do you not want us to raise taxes and not invest in any of those things? So I'm really hoping that council, you know, thinks seriously about having a possibility of a Harrow or Colchester Satellite Office. The plan is possibly to close Guesto once the fire department moves out of there. So it is going to be squishy at Town Hall with all the staff. I understand that. We have a really full bucket. I want to take like four scoops of that bucket and put them in the southern end. There is, with the tours that we have had in Essex and in Harrow and Colchester, there is nothing more valuable than having bodies, Essex bodies, planners, CEO, bylaw, right on their streets. Essex now, I see, like when I walk down Essex Center Ward One, it seems to be thriving. It's doing, it's doing quite well. Well, I feel like Harrow needs help, and I'm trying to think of how, if we could fill a storefront, if we could have a few staff members there, if we can feel like our residents in Harrow and Colchester are getting met halfway by having a place that they can go right in Harrow and right in Colchester to access municipal service. If we could lease something, it's low cost, low risk, we're just leasing, so we can walk away at any time. We could save money, we could pay off some of our debt. We still owe $7 million on the twin pad. We owe $2 million approximately on the Station One Fire Hall. We're going to own another two-plus million on the Guesto Fire Hall. We do need a Fire Hall in Harrow, too. So what is the priority? And that's really important that we get that from you. And so that will help us. And I'm excited to have the strategic planning session with council and to see where the rest of council sits.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vanadold?
Nothing to report, but I look forward to debating the notion of having two town halls. Thank you.
Counselor Bowman?
I just, past week, attended Osom in Pembroke and had a look at some of the flooding up that way. So I have some serious problems. I'll make a formal, or send out a reply to all the councilors about the convention. I think we're under some serious crunches as far as some of the, I hate to use the word downloading, but I think that's what it's going to come to, coming to our municipalities. So the proof will be in some of the documents that come from the province. But from what the speakers that we heard talk on various topics, it really is going to be a tough going for the next little while. Anyway, that's, I think we've run through it before, so we'll go through it again. And we will survive.
Thank you. I just got a couple of things here. I just want to respond a little bit to Counselor Bondi's request for a Satellite Office. Just.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, I don't think we can debate it.
Okay, I'm not debating it, but I just want to ask a question to our CEO. The... The, the arena, the Harrow arena, don't we have a space there that does town business? If somebody has a concern? That's, that's all I want to know.
Through your worship, I think, again, that's something we can talk about in our strategic planning session. They do have a place there that we can do business. I think in terms of reporting on, you know, what's going on tonight, this is for, for reports that way.
Second thing I want to talk to you, I want to thank, I want to thank a lot of Harrow businesses for the Colchester Family Fun Day. I'm at about $48,000 today, and I'm going to be well over $50,000. I've got three or four major sponsors that are going to give me money this year, so I'll be well over 50, so we have a little bit of money to put away for next year, too. Thank you.
Item 17, Bylaws. Bylaws for third and final reading. 1793 to provide for the Bowler South Molden Road Drain. For third reading this evening.
Counselor Bondi, secondor, Deputy Mayor Malash. All in favor? Kerry.
Bylaw 1810 to confirm the proceedings of the April 15th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Have a mover, please. Counselor Vanadon and secondor, Counselor Garan. All in favor? It's Kerry.
Bylaws for three readings this evening. 1818 being a bylaw to establish tax rates and additional charges for municipal, county, and education purposes for year 2019.
Have a mover, please. Counselor Bowman, secondor, Counselor Verbeek. All in favor? Kerry.
And bylaw 1820 being a bylaw to amend 1675, which is the bylaw to enter into a wages and benefit agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Essex and its firefighter employees.
Have a mover, please. Counselor Verbeek, Counselor Vanadon. Any questions? All in favor? It's Kerry.
And for two readings this evening, bylaw 1819 to confirm the proceedings of this May 6th regular council meeting.
Mover, please. Deputy Mayor Malash, secondor, Counselor Garan. All in favor? Kerry. And could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Garan and Counselor Verbeek, all in favor? Kerry. Thank you, and thanks for the folks that come out tonight.